I'd like to call a meeting order. Welcome to our April 3rd Town Board Meeting. At this point in time, let's rise with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Horace Ferguson from the Holly Springs United Methodist Church. Welcome back, Pastor, as usual. And I won't say that people make a mistake and think you're the mayor. We might want to trade. Well, never mind.
Why?
Never mind.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could we join together in a few words of invocation? Gracious God of all, mighty is your name, glorious are your works, plenteous is your mercy, unthinkable is your wisdom, inescapable is your love. O God of all the ages, by your mighty hand, you have brought us till now. Fill this troubled and divided world with your glory and show yourself to all people. Lord, as our land and world is troubled and splintered, look graciously upon us and help us check every passion that makes for hurt or conflict or unrest and injustice. As we pray for our nation and global community and for the efforts of peace, we also pray, O God, for our local community and its leaders, especially bestow wisdom, insight, and reasoned judgment to our town officials, that issues decided and actions taken may please you and further the grand interest of Holly Springs. We now wrap our town council in a blanket of faith and prayer and respectfully lift them up to you and your wondrous leading hand for direction for the greater good of our community, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Good words, Pastor. Thank you. I remember for adjustment approval, the April 3rd, 2018 meeting agenda. Mayor Potem.
Motion to adopt the April 3rd, 2018 meeting agenda with the following changes: Remove from Agenda 8E contract with BN and K in the Holly Springs Road Widening Project.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed in embassy. Thank you. I remember five is public comment period, and I have one person signed up, and I think I know him, Pastor Horace Ferguson. You should just stood up there.
Well? I'm Horace Ferguson, and my wife Brenda and I live at 5204 Sunset Walk Lane here in Holly Springs, and we've been here since 2002 and seen a lot of change in this community. A lot of good things have happened, and we look forward to continued positive achievements. One thing I have noticed, in addition to a good police department and fire department, they just left my house checking fire extinguishes and alarms, and a number of good observations about our community, and especially when compared with neighboring communities, not casting dispersions or stones toward any of our adjacent neighbors, neighboring towns. But I am so very proud and would like to bring a big thank you to our Public Works Those people do an outstanding job in tending to our needs, and I am just grateful for Valensi McNeil and AZ and others who are down there that caused that group to function effectively. And I just have observed their work through sunshine and rain, hot and cold, and oftentimes I stop out by the street to stop a truck for just a moment and thank them for the job that they do. And I think so many times we're quick to complain about a limb that may have been left in the yard instead of being picked up and carried on the truck. There are so many things that we could find to pick about with anybody and anything we'd like. But being positive people, we look for the positive in each other and in our governmental activities and efficiencies. And I'm just proud to be a part of a community that takes pride in the beautification of the community and people who care about it. And these people really seem to care and are responsive when there are special needs, and I'm just grateful to them, and I have heard many good things said about this department. And I am very grateful for the privilege of taking this brief time to highlight our appreciation for those workers, for our town. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you for today.
Thank you, Pastor. Good words. At this point in time, we'll close the public comment period and go to Gen. Item 6A, Special Recognition, Oath of Office, Board of Adjustment, ETJ Member. Linda, you taking it? Go ahead.
I, Lois Simmons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Board of Adjustment.
Of the Board of Adjustment.
Of the Town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
Of the Town of Holly Springs, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Gen. Item 7A, Public Hearing, Resolution of Property Exchange, Malbec Properties LLC Counselor Chafano. Oh, yes?
Yes, sir. As part of the developments in downtown, you know, there was the 242 development, which is on this map just north of Parcel B, that's that big pile of dirt that we see outside today. There was a land exchange that you all did about three meetings ago, I believe, and this is an additional land exchange. And the town owns Parcel A, which is a mostly undeveloped, part of which was the town parking lot, most of it was not. Parcel A is highlighted in blue on the map there. Parcel B is owned by Malbec Properties LLC, which is doing the exchange?
The block.
The block, excuse me, thank you, the block. And we need Parcel B in order to construct West Rogers Street, and the block needs some parking. So the theory was that we would exchange parcel for parcel, and in doing so, we got an appraisal report that's attached in your materials there. And Linda, I don't know if you can go to the next slide for me. So on page A to the appraisal report, the appraiser set values to the town Parcel A at about $149,000 and Parcel B at $57,000, based on, these are all based on land comparables. Now, the town is proposing, in addition to giving up the property, to get back a lease of the parking area on what, on the portion of land that the town's giving up to Parcel A. So we are looking to have the block construct the parking lot pursuant to the developer agreement and then lease it back to the town as public parking. The appraiser took stab at valuing that lease back at $65,000. So the total Malbec contribution is surmising as $122,400. The total town contribution is $149,000. So the statute requires us to receive full and fair consideration. We're $26,900 shy of that. You know, it's $26,900 better to Malbec. However, Malbec is greatly increasing the property tax, ad valorem property tax value of that area, and it is providing a significant number of jobs that are at or above the median wage in Wade County, according to the developers, from the employment base that's going to be there. So that's something you can factor in to say, well, maybe they're making up that $26,900 by what they're, why what they're putting into it. So the statute requires you to have a public hearing and listen to anybody that has anything to say about the subject. So, you know, it's for you to determine whether or not, even though this appraiser thinks we're $26,000 shy or $27,000 shy of equal, that you're still getting a full and fair value for the exchange. That's really up to you to determine if this exchange is full and fair. Property, the town wasn't using that property. It was a remainder piece that was acquired a long time ago as part of the abandoned railroad line through the town, the Durham Southern Railroad Line. So the town's cost basis in that land is essentially nothing. So Mr. Mayor just asked you to open up a public hearing that was advertised, if anybody's here to speak, and then you all can determine whether or not, you know, based on that appraisal report, if the town's getting full and fair consideration.
Any questions or comments of John at this point before we open up the public hearing?
For the record, could you just comment a little bit about the advantageous position we have for, you know, doing this sort of lease back as opposed to leasing the property and constructing our own parking?
Sure. Yeah, and you own it now, so, you know, you could do it. The bid climate right now, if we were to construct a parking lot, is very not favorable. You know, it is expensive right now for government contracting because there are more government jobs out there, and you've seen this in what you've been trying to do. We're paying a premium right now, unfortunately, in the public bid climate for any type of ground construction work. So it's expensive. The appraiser put a value on the construction that the town would not be able to construct, you know, this parking lot for $65,000. You know, it's just not, it would probably be to the power of five. I was going to say 10, but that might be a little, might be a bit of a stretch, but, you know, might be five times more expensive if the town were to do it. So we are getting public parking in essence, I mean, truthfully, it's parking that's adjacent to the block, so it will be used by the tenants and visitors of the block, but it's also available for public parking, just like the other lots that we've leased. Maybe point of reference is, in 2004, we did, we leased two lots from the Baptist Church and the Methodist Church. Chuck, I don't know if you know what those construction costs were in 2004, but, you know, I'm thinking they were in the 60s apiece in 2004, you know, so I don't really have, I don't remember those, but those numbers are relatively meaningless now. We'd never be able to construct it without that amount of money.
Thanks.
It's a 20-year lease.
It's a 20-year lease, yeah.
Other questions or comments?
Could we make it longer and have less money? Could we make it like for 50 years and net out the zero?
There's a 10-year option, I think, too, isn't there?
There's a, yeah, there's an option to renew for the town in 10-year increments, but if you as a board find that it's not full and fair unless there's a longer lease term, that's within your purview, I believe.
Comments about that?
Well, the number of jobs that are going to be created and then the tax, taxes we're going to get from the businesses there, I mean, that would benefit the town, so I don't see an issue at all. I like the fact that we can do a 10-year extension on that, because in the long term, that's probably, I would foresee that, you know, 10 years.
It helps the cost basis is essentially nothing, right? It was land we obtained, and, you know, now there's significant improvement potentially going there, so the benefit is probably outweighing our costs in this situation.
Right.
Definitely.
Right.
So in 20 years, would we have to pay money to extend the lease?
Uh, no, it's, it's the option of the town.
No cost.
Okay. At this point in time, I guess we will open a public hearing. I see no one signed up, so we will close a public hearing, continue discussion. Motion?
Yep.
Motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution 18-13 authorizing the land exchange.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed in embassy. Thank you. Gen. Item 8A, Consent Agenda. Mayor Potem.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed in embassy. Thank you. Gen. Item 9A, New Business, Presentation and Proposal for Audit Services. Tina Stro, Tina, yes? There you are.
Can you guys hear me? What I'm going to talk about tonight is the audit service. We are asking counsel to consider a contract to retain Elliot Davis as the town's audit firm, beginning the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, for a three-year term with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms. In early February, the finance staff issued a request for proposal for audit services. We did this because the local government commission recommends RFPs be requested for audit services at least every five years, and as of June 30th, 2017, Petway, Mills, and Pearson has served as the town's audit firm for the past five fiscal years, and their most recent contract extension had expired. So we went ahead and sent out the RFPs. What we did was we compiled a list of eight firms from an LGC approved list, as well as we researched into which firms are peer municipalities we're currently using for this audit. The RFPs were distributed to the audit firms with experience in, like I said, auditing North Carolina local government municipalities, and from the list of eight, five responded, two did not respond, and one declined. The RFPs were to include information such as cost of services for the general audit, cost of any required single audit, cost to prepare the comprehensive annual financial report, and the cost to prepare the annual financial information report. We also asked firms to provide their peer client list, a total number and experience of the proposed audit team members, and an expected percentage of time each team member would spend on the audit, both on and off-site. It was very important for us to know the tentative scheduling and timeline for the completion of the audit, so we can ensure our financials were completed and submitted by the LGC deadline of October 31st. So, I'm not sure how, there we go. Okay, this was the matrix that we use to evaluate the firms. Like I said, five actually submitted, out of eight, one declined and two did not respond. From the submitted proposal, we comprised this comparison matrix, and it helped us to evaluate the firms based on the criteria that we considered important in choosing the new audit firm. The evaluation criteria included the auditor's North Carolina municipal audit experience, population and similar fund types of the peer clients, software of their peer clients, so that we could gauge their knowledge of what we currently use and what we can give them, the number of members, experience, and professional level of the proposed audit team, presentation of proposal materials, and of course, the pricing. The finance staff also held phone interviews with all of the new audit firms we were talking to, where we were able to confirm the details of the RFP that they had sent in, but also ask them additional questions that we might have, and then also gave the chance to, for the auditors, to ask us questions, so they could get to know us a little bit better. We also contacted references for each of the firms that were provided, and all were, of course, glowing references, so. The next thing I want you guys to look at is just kind of a overview of the criteria that we use, and you can see how well that each of the firms did, just kind of like a quick glance. So after a thorough review of materials based on the mentioned criteria, references, and interviews, the staff recommends retaining the firm Elliot Davis to complete the town's audit and financial statement preparation. While Elliot Davis' fee quote is not the lowest of the firms, we feel like it's fair and reasonable, and only a slight increase of $320 over the audit fee for June 30th, 2017. So we ask that the contract be approved for the three-year term with the option to extend two additional one-year terms.
Questions or comments?
The criteria you had before, seeing knowledge of the software experience, so what are those, did you think were the most important things when you were looking at the firms?
The criteria? We actually felt like that the knowledge of the software, but we really wanted to go with somebody that had experience with bigger municipalities, and that's why we chose Elliot Davis, because I think in your packages, it, there was a printout that shows you which peer clients they have, and I think it was Morganton and Salisbury were what they had in, or maybe Concord, but one of them was like double our size, and then the other was actually kind of, kind of, you know, about the same population, so, and they do have experience with our software. So that's kind of where we were going with it. We needed somebody that kind of had experience with bigger municipalities, but also at the same time, you know, right where we were at, and then had the same experience with the fund types we have. And that was one of the questions that we asked when we interviewed, was what experience they had with the fund types, especially the project fund accounting.
That was Concord, Morganton, and Salisbury, correct?
That's it, yeah. Yeah.
Happened to have that in front of me, otherwise I wouldn't have known. Other comments or questions?
I had a chance to review a couple of these proposals with the finance department. I'm in finance for a living, so it was just something I'm interested in generally, so the one comment I would make is our past auditor that we've been using the last couple of years, we're their biggest client. Town's grown a lot in the last couple of years, so as you continue to do that, right, we're their biggest and best reference at this point. We're growing into a category where we need probably a bigger firm to start helping us with moving forward recommendations on process and policy, and from what I heard from staff, I think Elliot Davis provided a lot of good interaction with them in their initial conversations. So I think it's a good step for us to, you know, move to a firm that's a little bigger, maybe a little more experienced as we, as the town, continue to grow and, you know, as our financials become more complex as well.
Good point.
Agreed.
Any other comments or questions? Let's go to a motion, please. Somewhere. You got it? You got the clicker for the motion?
Click.
Next one.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay, sorry.
You were in total charge.
I was, sorry.
All right, go.
Motion to retain Elliot Davis, PLLC, to conduct the town's annual financial audit and financial statement preparation for a three-year term with an option to extend for two additional one-year terms.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed in embassy. Thank you, Tina. Good job.
Thank you.
Gen. Item 9B, New Business, the Jewel Engineering Contract, Carolyn Couch. Hi, Carolyn. How are you doing? Hanging in.
All right, so I come to you tonight, Jewel Engineering is who we're using for the stream channel, and I'm coming to you because, A, we ask them to take care of the construction bidding services portion of, when we get to that part of the stream channel, the design part is where we are, our preliminary design. That's getting ready to go to the state and core at the end of this week, so we're kind of putting cart before the horse, but, so we're there when we get there. So that's the additional thing I'm asking for Jewel, and also additional engineering design services. There was a contingency within their first estimate that was submitted to FEMA, and so we're not asking for additional funds. The funds are already there due to that contingency, but due to the length of time since Matthew until now, as all the storms that we've had, it's done additional damage to the stream channel, and so they want to fix that. So that's not an issue right after we get the mainstream channel taken care of. And then also, more things have come up as far as what they think needs to be done in order to improve the protection for when further storms come on down the line, possibly as big as Matthew again. And since we were given the grant with the mitigation from FEMA, all that's already there, we're just asking for permission to enter this contract with those funds that were laid out and what was presented to y'all. So it's all there.
You have the funds.
We have the funds. I just need your permission to move forward. And so the preliminary design, like I said, will go to the state and the core this week, then it'll come back to us for sedimentary and erosion control review, then it'll enter in the final review stage, and then the bidding documents will be ready for the bidding process. The bidding process will take about 30 days, and then from there, construction will last about 60 days from the day of notice to proceed, once that's given, and they plan to have it done by the end, or rather, mid of September, and then we'll go right in with McGill and Associates for the parking lot and finish that, and hopefully have everything done by mid-November. Everything goes according to plan, so.
Okay.
It's quite a walk in the park, but it's coming, and a lot of hard work's been put into this, and they've been really great to work with. I just ask that you work with us on this to further their, what they're doing for us.
Any questions or comments, Carol?
Exciting to see progress.
Yeah.
Exactly. Been there, done that.
So mid-November, we're looking?
That's what we're hoping for, the complete, yeah, everything. So, and I know that's right in the middle of hurricane season, or a little thereafter, so we're hoping for the best, but what you see in front of you is the preliminary design that's going to the state and to the core, and I can't point to this, but you see the enhanced scour pool, that's right below the emergencies, or, excuse me, our main spillway, and the gray that you see up at the top of that, those are gabian walls that will reinforce the bank more so than it's ever been enforced before. And then what they've decided, based on the hydrologic and hydraulic studies, is that the best way to then taper down is those different pools that you see, the rocks in between, and that gives the force of the water time to dissipate as it's going down further and not be such a powerful force that's just taken out our stream channel, or the bank, rather. So that is what we're going for.
All right.
Any questions?
Any other questions or comments?
Great. Thank you.
Motion. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Motion to retain Jewel Engineering for Bass Lake Park Stream Channel Repair Engineering Design and Construction Administration Services.
Second.
Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed in embassy. I remember 10. I remember 10, Other Business. Have to get my usual crosswalk safety, and I have heard some, some problems or complaints about some, some visual issues on a couple of the crosswalks. We could talk about that later, maybe. Strawberry, maybe. And I'll catch up with you on that separately. Again, people who do this and don't pay attention, I see it all the time, it's just scary, and people, there's more people now than there used to be, and I hate to say somebody's going to get it, but texting and driving is, if I even look at my phone while I'm driving, I'm halfway off the road, so I quit doing that. So again, I commend people for not doing this, especially using their cell phone while they're driving. I think that's a good, good suggestion to do. Other, other business?
We've got Troop 312 here tonight, 213. David Alvarez, you want to stand up? Just want to recognize you.
Hey, David.
Thanks for coming out.
Get your eagle.
I don't have anything specific.
Anything else?
I wanted to mention I had a great time with the ride-along with Officer Tony Manchella. I hope I said that right. Learned a lot about all the great work in staff, met several of your staff, John, and it was great. They, they worked really hard, it was constant, you can tell that they're taking good care of our community, so it was a real pleasure. Looking forward. It was quiet, I was, you can't use the Q word, but it was quiet while I was there, so I think maybe I should just ride along all the time. Would that work? Yes, okay. But I'd like to do it again, and also do the same with fire and public safety, and you need to see how hard these guys work. It's great.
Thank you. Anybody else? Managers, before?
April 7th, this Saturday, we have the outdoor winter farmer's market, although it's technically spring, from 9:30 to 12:00, and then on the 14th, at Daniel Dare's Sport Complex, or Action Sports Complex, shred with the police bike rodeo. So that's April 14th, from 9:00 until 12:00. That's all I have.
Are you promising no snow Saturday?
No snow.
Okay. Counselor, motion?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, what? All ready?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you for coming.
About a half.
Thank you, Billy.